Good evening.
Now we're on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's Wednesday, January 16th, 2019. It's 8:01 or 2:00. We're in the Mathers Center Cafe Extension, and this is the Planning and Zoning Commission of Darien, Connecticut. All general meeting items this evening. We have a discussion with Glenn Chalder of Plenometrics regarding modifications to Darien's business zones, both regulation amendments and a map amendments. And before you get started, I just found this pretty cool. If you go to the last couple maps, Existing Business Zone map and Possible Business Zone map, and the reason we're doing this, not only because we talked about it, but if you count the grounded zones and the overlay zone in the first map and compare it to the second map, and kind of look at them also, we'll put all this on the web, I'm assuming. Basically, what we're contemplating is going from 14 grounded zones and one overlay zone to nine grounded zones, if I counted correctly. Oh, there is an overlay, so it would be eight plus one. So it just, you know, what we're trying to do, at least in good part, is to simplify our regs because, I guess, they were created over decades and decades and decades and decades. So I'll stop there, Glenn, and thank you. This booklet was, before you get started, was really helpful.
Thank you.
Awesome, and I can't imagine trying to tick and tie everything, but...
Well, I think, right off the bat, that I got a lot of help from Jeremy and Fred along the way. I think the regulations in terms of the intricacy of the various sections and everything else, I think we are trying to make it more user-friendly, make it easier for people to figure out what they can and cannot do in the different zoning districts, and to provide a clear path for what kinds of approvals and things that they need. So that's guided us, and I think with Fred's help and Jeremy's help, whatever, we've gotten to a stage, I think, that we wanted to share back with you. I think, right here on the cover, it identifies some of the major things that we've tried to accomplish in this version of the regulations. We've tried to follow up on our conversation we had in the fall in terms of restaurants and food service operations, to create clearer delineations about what is or is not permitted in terms of restaurants and food service, et cetera. We picked up on a conversation about office personal service users in the DC district, eliminated a five-acre requirement for hotel motel or inn, and, you know, change around the office districts, et cetera, and drive-throughs and so on. So I think that that's kind of an overview. I think it makes sense for us to kind of go through this page by page, just so if anything jumps out at the commission that we can talk about it and make changes.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, we're not going to make any decisions tonight, but if you can almost explain to us page by page, then if any of the commissioners have questions about it...
Yeah.
Log the questions, but we'll definitely save kind of comment for our next meeting when we have time to think about more, ask you for any changes. Like, if something jumps right off at us, we'll let you know.
I think our goal here is to continue to refine this.
Yes.
When the commission is ready at some time, at some point, the logical step will be a public hearing.
Yep.
And so, we need to work through, share this information, et cetera, and get feedback, and then go ahead and schedule that review.
Perfect, so, go ahead.
So, page one is really just kind of an overview of the regulations, some of the major changes, et cetera. The first major section, no far one, is the definitions. Things which are highlighted in yellow here are changes in the sense that we have made since the last meeting with the commission, I think it was October, wasn't it? In October. And this, again, deals with this concept of restaurants, full service versus quick service, outdoor dining and drive-through being modifications to those, and then accessory food service versus a retail food establishment. And I think what we're trying to do here is to clarify what's permitted where and what type of permit, and sometimes the distinctions weren't always clear.
And use industry lingo, like "quick service" and that sort of thing.
I think what we tried to do is to, there are different terminologies that are used in different situations, but we felt that these are terms that people would more easily relate to.
Hey, just one, the inn in the motel...
Yeah.
Separate, is that redundant? Should we just cross those two out and just use that one entry?
I'll take a look at how those are used. So we tried to limit our changes in the regulations, too.
Okay.
Essentially, what we're doing is consolidating Section 6 and 7 into a new Section 7, and trying to limit the other changes elsewhere in the regulation.
Okay.
But if we can deal with that just here in these sections...
Yeah.
We start chasing it.
You let us, no, it's not a big deal, but those two separate denotations.
I'll take a look at that, thank you. So any thoughts, questions, anything else on the definitions?
Right, one of the definitions here, which Glenn and I have talked about, is things like medical clinics, which might not have existed until recently. It's a new thing, we have to figure out how we want to address it and in which zones. Similarly, physical therapy didn't exist 40 years ago, so we have to decide how we've treated it in recent years and better define it either maybe as a service use or medical use or both, and clean those types of things out.
For things like, you know, we're seeing all sorts of stuff again that hasn't been around in 20 years, like the salt cave and the saunas that are infrared and the cryotherapy and the stretching thing, is that all just going to be under personal service businesses? And do we need to look at some of those things, or can we just, are we comfortable with just blanket saying that's clearly a personal service?
I think what we've talked about is trying to expand examples in personal service, and even earlier today, Dave gave Glenn some additional tweets to mention, maybe expanding kit, obviously, we'll never be able to itemize every single one, but clearly, to give nail salons, hair salons, to give it more, you know, back in the day, craftsmen, well, not a lot of craftsmen in Darien, but to expand it to reflect current types of trends that we see.
And then, two other points. One is, you know, we kind of struggled with, particularly in downtown, you know, like the Huntington Learning Center and those type of things. I think Craig gave us a very nice email on expanding those type of things, but I think, you know, particularly, you know, satellite campuses, computer labs, those type of things. But also, when you think about, like, things that are coming up, you know, I think particularly, like, you know, co-working spaces that aren't necessarily offices, and then businesses that are, I say that are somewhat, that don't necessarily have a storefront presence, and a ton of, like, you know, things that are services but are, like, you know, simply delivery service, like Uber Eats, right? That's a business, right? Doesn't really operate out of storefront, but you're going to have traffic going in and out, you're going to have employees in and out of a location, just, you know, three things to...
Yeah, that's what we've been trying to brainstorm, is what trends are, in fact, before the commission beginning started, we talked about trends and where we see things going. So a lot of the things you see here are reflections of, say, Kumon and our Huntington Learning, which maybe didn't exist, how do we want to address them in the regulations?
Okay.
And the flexibility for office parks, which we'll get to in a little while.
Great.
So those are the definitions. I think at this point in time now, just to page five, to remind the commission that essentially what we're doing is we're repealing pretty much all of Section 600 of the regulations, and also 700 and 710, and going to a new numbering system with the new zoning districts. And that's just mainly to clarify everything in the regulations, that that section no longer exists and has been replaced by this new section for all.
So then what happens eventually? Can you put new regulations in 600 after some time? Yeah, okay, got it.
We're going to go to a letter system next, right? Or barcode or something like that. So, starting on page six is really the central business district zone. We did change the order of the zoning districts. We went from sort of the central business district, the main business district in town, and kind of went down to neighborhood.
Oh.
Whereas the old regulations are actually sort of organized slightly differently and kind of the other way. So, we started off, you know, since we could reorganize and renumber, CBD first here. On page seven, now we start to see how we're addressing food-related issues or uses. So, retail food establishment is a situation, so it says cheese shop, other similar types of situations. Selling food or beverage is not generally intended for meat and human consumption, so what's your fish market, those types of things. So it's a store, but it just sells food-related products. And then, requiring special permits is a full-service restaurant or a quick-service restaurant. That's the way we address those types of situations. We are providing for discussion the concept of the possibility of drive-through in the downtown area. That's addressed overall also on page eight. And we talk about, at the very bottom of 725, a window of some type provided that such facility is located, designed, and operated to minimize its visibility from the street, not obstruct pedestrian travel, or detract from a pedestrian-friendly streetscape. So if somebody could put a drive-through in the back of the common park parking lot on the...
Central Street.
There you go.
Okay, like, if you think of, we had a very long conversation about the pros and cons of drive-throughs, whether food or banking or other, in the downtown, and I think we came to the conclusion, sometimes it works just fine. Like, if you think of the Wells Fargo drive-up off the Center Street, doesn't really impact traffic.
Laurel Hill Bank or whatever.
Yeah, Laurel Hill Bank where it's off the side, it's not, or sometimes it doesn't work as well. And so, the question is, did we want to leave it? And you'll see that conversation in many of the zones. In downtown, drive-through banks, drive-through food or other, and we have to make a decision on almost each one in each zone. Some zones are certainly more appropriate, some zones less appropriate, so we want to make sure we try to change it and reflect the commission's view and what you think might work.
If we said we didn't want drive-throughs in the CBD, would it be an issue because we do already have a drive-through bank existing? Would we just get grandfathered in, or...
If we'd get grandfathered in, we wouldn't allow new ones. It's, in some ways, it's, for example, now we don't allow banks, first-floor banks. So, some people...
Did we change that?
In CBD, you can have them in the Corbin sub-area...
Okay.
But not in the rest of the downtown. And some banks look at it as, wow, I got a valuable bank spot, I don't want to lose it, and, so, yes, the existing drive-throughs would be grandfathered, but you couldn't add new ones.
So, this is definitely a point we should discuss, because we've been trying to keep the continuity of the sidewalks, but to, you know, you think of the CBD, and if you just get away from the post-road corridor, there might be places that it makes sense behind buildings, but, again, we don't have to decide tonight, but definitely, this is kind of, put a star next to that one, because we definitely want to hear some public input on that one, too.
And I think if the entry drive or exit drive crossed the sidewalk, interrupted pedestrian streetscape, now it's an automobile focus dominating what's intended to be a pedestrian streetscape. On the other hand, if it was in the back in the parking lot, and we're, the analogy I use with Jeremy and Fred was that, you know, if a tree falls in the forest but there's nobody there, does it make a noise?
Yeah.
If it's a drive-through in the town center but nobody can see it, and doesn't impact anybody, is that a problem?
Yeah, like, you think if there's a way they could do CV, I don't know if there is a way, but CVS and have a pharmacy drive-through or something like that, that might be an amenity that some people would like, but, again, we want to...
Not in the current, okay, but, yeah. But there could be situations. So, this allows people to apply for that, to make the case that they can meet those three criteria, and the commission to decide whether or not they think they have or not.
And it's a special permit.
It is a special permit.
Right, right.
So I think, if the commission wanted to allow that, this, I think, gives you some...
Right, so put a star next to that, right?
Got it.
So I think the other thing, I didn't mean to jump over on page eight, too, is this conversation on Section 24 about accessory food service, and then tables or chairs for inside a retail food establishment. So accessory food service is, you have an office and it has a lunchroom, okay? Or it's, it's not a restaurant open to the public that's attracting new people, it's just food service onsite, or you sell clothing but you have chocolate chip cookies and coffee.
Yeah.
That's not attracting people, there's serving people in the store. So that's permitted by a zoning permit in this situation. And then, the proposal that we have here in the regulations, too, is tables and chairs for up to eight people inside a retail food establishment. So if you're a fish market, you can have eight tables, uh, eight tables, eight chairs, tables and chairs, and search out.
Or, don't even go with that example, go with what we're seeing downtown, like Kirby and, there's a few others. I forgot the other ones on the other side of the tracks, but where you go in and you go shopping and you have a cup of coffee as you shop, and that's actually a trend that, you know, we talk about certain trends that are emerging.
That could be accessory food service, but I think the issue that we were talking about is the...
Well, no, no, with seating, though. Like, we're talking about a retail, right, Kirby &amp; Co. is a perfect example.
The butcher shop is mostly retail, but they do have, sell some things that you can eat there. I guess, one thing we talked about is, does the commission want to put an upper limit on the tables and chairs that you can have associated with fjord fisheries or the butcher shop?
Oh, wait, I missed the word "food" there, I'm sorry. So, retail food.
Retail food.
So how do we...
Darien Cheese Shop, if they wanted to sell coffee.
Got it.
But now, I have to bring up again, because I was there and I was approached by two women in roost, which is a new, correct me if I'm wrong, is that an accessory food as opposed to retail?
That would be counted here as quick serve, because you're oaring off the board.
Right.
And, so that would be, that's the new category we're creating, which doesn't have an upper limit on seating.
It does, right, but right now it does, right? Because I get inundated by peers and people around town saying, can you get more chairs? Everyone's standing.
Well, remember, they also had to hit the parking regs, too, which is another layer.
That would be related to which will...
Yeah, we'll get to it, so we'll definitely...
This is in the sense, this is in the category for an accessory use.
Okay.
So this is now, you're selling fish, you're selling, and it's an accessory, little benefit, you can serve a sandwich or something like that, but not meant to be crazy. There's no parking requirement...
Yeah.
...associated with this, so in other words, we're letting people dawdle and linger, and if they actually want to do more than that, then they're moving more towards a restaurant, they just got to come in and demonstrate that the parking's there.
So, I guess the question is, is it retail food establishment or just retail establishment? Because we do have non-food establishments doing similar things, like...
So I think, again, it's not the primary part of their operation.
Right.
If the food is free, like, they're allowing coffee or something like that, that becomes accessory food service. Even if they are charging for it, we talked about accessory food services being like a hotel with a breakfast bar, right?
So where does a Kirby &amp; Co. fall in, Jeremy?
I don't think we put it in the list on page three. I think we talked about it in the...
And I don't mean to call them out, because there's a number of places like that now.
Right.
Would that be retail food establishment?
I'm not familiar with this, so I can't, I can't...
So, again, it's like a place that you go and buy hard goods, such as plates and gifts and...
One at a time, please, one at a time.
Go ahead, John.
Talking over each other.
Sorry.
I can't hear you that great, but you're nothing.
I'll make him, there we go.
He can take a little microphone.
Kirby &amp; Company is a store in downtown Darien which sells things like pillows and small tables and knickknacks.
Gifts.
And gifts would be a good way to phrase it.
They charge for the coffee?
They do, they sell baked goods and coffee in the back. So that's an accessory part of their use. Their main business, I'll call it, would be the sale of goods, but they have this accessory food, which might be like what we talked about before, a cafeteria for an office building.
Okay.
So to me, it sounds...
So maybe we should tweak that a little bit.
...de minimis, if you will, in terms of...
Back and forth. Sorry.
It's tough tonight in here.
Y'all fix the room.
So I think that type of situation, if there was, are there less than eight tables? Eight chairs, excuse me? Are there any?
Yes, less.
Hmm, or somewhere, okay.
I'd say it's a freebie, it's not the main operation. If it got to the point that there were people lining up for muffins and backdoor donuts and all sorts of other stuff, and, hang on a second, you transformed this operation, now we have to start thinking about parking and other stuff. If it falls in that little category, these are the things that enhance our downtown, make it stronger, attract people, enjoy the experience, I think we want to allow and encourage those, and there's plenty of parking.
Yeah.
I think this does that.
Okay, so, you know the issue, Jeremy, it's Brown &amp; Co., Kirby &amp; Co., it's a trend that's emerging, where it becomes experienced.
We call it accessory food service.
Yeah, okay.
Which is an area within a building where, as an accessory use, food is prepared, served, and/or dispensed to employees and/or guests in which the use is located.
Okay.
I think it's that component, would you agree, Glenn?
I think that interpretation works.
Right, perfect, so, just, maybe we'll refine it to include retail establishments, do not just retail food.
But I think we've spent a little, we've tried to figure out the, I'll call it, the roost and sono bakery problem.
But I have a quick question, so that is definitely a quick service? Sono bakery, roost.
I would consider it roost, and because the way we've defined quick service is a restaurant with a primary motive, either service or and/or sale, if you will, is food being ordered either from a posted menu or a counter, like, upper crust bagels, you're either standing at the counter and saying, I want this, or sono bakery and roost are good examples, Starbucks would be another example.
So does the quick service have a table limitation?
No, or no chair or table limitation.
Okay, so if we implement these new regulations, then they would just be regulated based on square footage and parking?
But that is an interesting question, Glenn. At that point, they've been approved as convenience food service in the past.
Which were eliminated?
But then, we're eliminating that convenience food service is no longer in the regs. How would that come back to the commission to be...
Are they changing their operation?
No.
If they're not changing their operation, then they just transfer from one category to another.
Right, so as you put in the note here...
They're grandfathered, no permits required, et cetera, they are good to go.
And then suddenly their chair and table limitation would be lifted, but per their square footage and parking?
Not lifted, the issue is that, should they want to expand the seats or tables, et cetera, then the issue is that's going to, in this new category, that's going to kick them into having to meet the requirement for parking.
Right.
So they're grandfathered, where they had to go above that, I believe would require a new...
I think it's kind of interesting, because the original approvals for both specifically limit the number of tables and chairs, because that's the way the regs read at the time. So, they would have to come back to the commission, have that approval tweak to, I'll call it, redefine them, lift, eliminate, if you will, the chair and table limit, and to ascertain that the parking still meets the requirements.
Gotcha. And then would the planning and commission under the special permit be designating the number of table and chairs in a quick service food?
That's a good question.
I would urge the commission to consider doing that, otherwise, what happens is people continue to sneak in tables, chairs, et cetera.
Right.
And then, your consideration of parking or allocation of parking starts to get a little out of control. So the issue would be, demonstrate to us that you meet, you have adequate parking through whatever means necessary, we'll authorize that, and you're underway. But if it becomes an unlimited resource, tables and chairs, I think it could quickly...
Yeah, I mean, and just to comment, I won't name the business, but one doesn't even have any parking allocated to it, if I'm thinking of it, and, you know, the reason why they get the rent that they do is because they have a limitation to, you know, and so if you just let them go and put in 50 chairs and tables, not that they'd fit, it changes the whole dynamic, and then we're scrambling trying to find parking for a building that parking doesn't exist, where they have to use public parking. So, that's where the next level, and, again, we'll be very careful as we redefine things that refer you, hey, it's not just a freebie, you have to come back...
Yeah.
Define where your parking is, and then we'll allocate the appropriate number of chairs, tables, et cetera.
And the only other thing I think to add to that is outdoor dining here is shown as an accessory use requiring a special permit. So the issue is, is that if people decide that they then want to do more in terms of a cafe or anything else like that, the issue is, okay, well, maybe we didn't approve that, or, you know, you're going to come back to us for a special permit for that.
Even if you're a quick service?
Yeah, no matter, any outdoor dining, the issue is, typical concerns can, this can be the proximity to the neighbors, what type of activities are occurring outside, if it's just casual, I think, out from the Starbucks, there's a little seating area that people sometimes sit at, it's really not, it's a casual type of thing, but if there's clinking glassware and other things, and it's a fairly major outdoor dining operation that could affect neighbors nearby, the commission would just want to take a closer look at that.
Well, and also parking, because it increases your capacity. Now, I think the way the regs are thought of now is, when you have, like, let's, Shake Shack's a perfect example, right? The thought process is, you move your demand from inside to outside for those, so there, it's not like you're doubling, even though you are maybe doubling the table space, your demand doesn't double in the summer versus the winter, right? And that's kind of the common sense aspect of things, too.
That's correct, it's, that's a standalone site, so it's kind of unique, and that if you can't get in, you're probably not going to find somewhere to park your car. The issue becomes shared sites, where restaurants share parking with other uses, it becomes tough, because the restaurant has so much indoor and outdoor table space. That's great, it's very successful, and people are having a good time, and they're really squeezing the people they're sharing the parking with. So, we may, I guess that's a question, Glenn, we may have to clarify that quick service tables and chairs can be limited by the commission, by a special permit, or something to clarify that, that issue which came up tonight.
Good, thank you.
Just jumping ahead real quick to page 55, there is a parking standard for outdoor dining at the bottom.
Okay.
So the issue is, is that you would have to satisfy the parking requirement for what you've got going on inside, and your parking requirement for what's going on outside. So, it's not a freebie, you have to demonstrate that you can find...
Note a change in the trend, we don't have dinner theaters anymore, either.
That's why we're eliminating that, yes. So that kind of gives us an overview of what's happening in the central business district, not too many other changes overall here, because, as you know, the whole Corbin development has been ongoing, and the regulations were being actively used at that time. Starting on page 12, we now get into the Corbin sub-area, this is, again, very, it's part of the CBD, so the standards are really very similar to the CBD district itself.
And the only changes are kind of the definitional changes that you're...
And now introducing the restaurant category. Over on page 13, the middle note on the right-hand sidebar says, there used to be a provision in there that said sale of prepared foods such as candy or ice cream, but we deleted that, because that's now essentially considered food for immediate consumption, it's a quick-service restaurant, special permit. So it's the same approval, it's just a different name.
Got it, yeah.
So our intent is not to make people not performing, and I think if you look over on page 14, and again, it's the same approach in terms of accessory food service, tables and chairs for eight people, and again, possibility of a drive-through for the commission. So that brings us up now to page 21. So we had talked about what to name this zone, right now it's the Noronhaits Redevelopment Zone, we've talked about making it the Noronhaits Zone, but some people consider Noronhaits to be bigger than just the business zone, so the name that we've gone with here at this point is the Noronhaits Business Zone District. Starting on page 22, again, retail food establishment is there, full-service, quick-service restaurants. Again, the note in the sidebar says, there had been a provision, any permitted use involving the sale of prepared foods, whether intended for consumption on or off the premises, we've defined that now as a quick-service restaurant, so there you go. And again, the same thing in terms of accessory food service, outdoor dining, and the possibility, again, of a drive-through window, because this is a pedestrian-oriented district, so make sure, again, you highlight that.
Structured parking, did we miss that the last time when we had the redevelopment zone, or...
I think it's been in here for quite some time.
Oh, okay.
In terms of our continuing discussions, I think these areas are a possibility where structured parking could provide...
Well, we approved it, right? So, I guess...
Yeah, but Noronhaits...
In Noronhaits, yeah, there's a structure, yeah. So that was just covering that one.
Clarify.
Does both new developments, former and federal, or just federal?
It's underground, so I don't know what you'd call it, yeah.
Federal.
I work here for homers.
Homers is underground, federal is both underground and then the...
Above wall.
Drugstore, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm up to page 27. So this is now the service business zone. So at the present time, we have the service business zone and service business zone east. These have been proposed to be merged to eliminate some of the distinctions between the different districts, the service business districts, and provide some consistency in the language here overall. We continue to go around and around a little bit of external storage or activity, whether it's required or allowed, the language that's currently crafted here indicates it includes external storage or activity.
So can we change that to a house? Is there, Jeremy, is there, I know we've touched upon this a couple times.
Glenn and I and Fred spoke about it at length. One of the things that distinguishes the service business and service business east zones, there's four of those zones, Springdale Florist, Naropan Avenue, near, between West and Heights Road, service business east is, think of Bertucci's and the Car Washes over there, but really, those are zones which would allow automobile-related uses, large But really, those are zones which would allow automobile-related uses, large gardener centers, so if you think of Nielsen's and Gardener Center. And what really, one of the distinctions Darien has from Norwalk, if you look at what Norwalk has right near the border, Walmart, Costco, large retail, which they've allowed to go on the periphery of town. What we've said for many years is, we want a zone which allows these automobile-related uses, and by putting retail on downtown, we believe we'll have a much stronger downtown. For example, the Darien Toy Box and other small shops, the Darien Sport Shop, gives, allows us to have a lot of retail downtown. If we were to allow that to spread in service business zones, I think that would severely weaken the downtown. And that's why Glenn left it in here this way, is to really keep those types of garden center uses in town, florists, fence companies, lawnmower repair places, and allow them in certain zones.
So, but the outdoor question, you know, allows or requires?
Requires would be...
I would think we would say allow, because right now, if you look at service businesses, some, or service business zones throughout town, some have some outdoor displays, some don't, but we don't, we shouldn't require them to have outdoor displays.
If we don't require, like, for example, many years ago, I think it was Borders called, said, oh, we'd love to go where Bertucci's is, pretty huge Borders, huge retail stores. No, we don't allow retail all in the service business zone. Everything you sell has to have external storage or activity. So if you're a gardener center, and you have all these plants that need to be outside, or Springdale Florist, where you have bags of peat moss that need to be outside, we don't want those uses in the middle of downtown. You can imagine piles of peat moss in the middle of downtown. So we want a separate zone for those folks, and the people that sell books, or toys, or clothes, with those folks downtown.
Oh, so you want to, you...
You want it to be required, so that we don't have big box stores.
Got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That makes sense.
It makes sense, and you wouldn't want automobile dealers in the middle of downtown.
Sure. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Again, the full-service restaurants, quick-service restaurants. Over on page 28, accessory food service, outdoor dining, drive-through window, not limited here. The limitations we had earlier about pedestrian-friendly streetscape, et cetera, is not in this section because the service business zone is not as pedestrian-friendly as the downtown Corbin Subarea or Noroten Heights. So this, again, is highlighted here for your consideration and discussion as to whether or not you're comfortable with that.
And this is, in the service business, we would think of, there's a bunch of banks there currently.
TD Bank.
Or I shouldn't say a bunch, like, a couple banks, and then...
Patriot Bank?
Yeah.
Patriot, TD and HSBC.
Yeah. And then you also have Duchess with a drive-through window?
So again, this says, if anybody wants to do it, it's a special permit, so you can look at traffic flow, the impact on the overall site design.
Blue Wave Taco. Okay, perfect. Got it.
Are we on page 27? Let me do your pass next.
Go.
Is this the first zone that's, my question is on page 27, is this the first zone that brings in hotel motel inn? Has this always been in the service business zone? Because I tend to lean against, I remember the days, you know, growing up with the Haosho and everything. I like, I'm not a big fan of the hotel motel inn, so I just wanted to see if, I thought it didn't exist now in the town of Darien. Are we putting it back in?
It's...
It's there, I think.
Back in the day, there used to be, I think, three hotels on Ledro. It was Howard Johnson's, Comfort Inn, and the Holiday Inn. This is back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. The provision was you have to have five acres, and it had to be a service business zone. So if you look now, section 664 allows hotels and inns in the service business zone. The commission does not allow hotels and inns in any other zone. It's the only zone that allows it. So the question for the commission, right now, it's only allowed in the service business zone, five acres or more.
Now, how does that require outdoor storage?
Well, it would be a separate use.
Okay.
So in the service business zone, for example, we allow restaurants.
Oh, wait, 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 sorry. Yeah.
Not a retail, it wouldn't be a retail, yeah.
It's just living facilities.
Vegetable hot...
Yeah, deal-related.
You have to sleep outside.
So the question for the commission is, do you wish to allow hotels, motels, and inns? If so, in which zones? It would probably be a special permit use, and do you wish to keep the five-acre minimum block size?
I'd be open to hearing public comment on that.
So we're not adding it?
Right.
It exists. We're just adding the words motel or inn.
And currently, Darien does not have any hotels in the town.
What about that inn that used to be a guesthouse, B&amp;B, whatever it was, past the funeral parlor, going down a post road towards Stanford?
Giovanni's.
Just from the audience, somebody said by Giovanni's.
On the north side of the post road.
Hmm, no.
It's not, I'm remembering something that no longer exists.
Something used to be there, whether...
It's not there anymore.
It was boarding house.
Yeah, it was a boarding house. David Hawes is here in the audience. I think there was some kind of boarding yard. Long time again.
Sorry. Bonnie's going to kill us.
When the post road was before the turnpike, you would travel up north and look for a place to stop. So that's an interesting question for the commission. What do you wish to allow, and in which zones? Is there a big demand for hotels, motels, and inns in Darien? I know before Whole Foods came in, one of the proposed uses for that site was a hotel. But then Whole Foods came in.
All right, so we'll definitely talk about that. It's in now. You know, it does have the five-acre minimum, and we'll go from there.
Thanks.
But, you know, highlight that one, because I, you know, I don't know how many five-acre sites within the service business zone we have anymore anyway, so it's probably unlikely. But if it's unlikely, then why do we allow it?
Page 28, there's two comments in the sidebar, again, the question about drive-through restaurants in the SBE zone. We have one out today. Duchess, I think there's any, are there any others?
Blue Wave Taco.
Okay, there you go.
Blue Wave Tacos.
And then the requirement for restaurants to have at least 1,200 square feet of indoor space devoted to customer table and seating area was removed. So the issue is on our new categorization of restaurants. We categorized them and did not put a square foot limitation or standard on any one of them. Just want to point that out to the commission.
We discussed that in a previous application, too.
I'm over to page 31, unless the commission has anything between there and there.
Just, if you could go to 20, the setbacks and all that, they seem pretty minor, the changes by, you know, consolidating the setback requirements. Could you just comment quickly on that?
Yeah, I think what we tried to do is to blend the setback requirements so that, we generally always took the more permissive one, because our goal was not to put a higher setback to make people that might have been building under the SBE regulations, let's say. We didn't want to make people non-conforming. So if there was a side yard setback of a certain distance, and we went with a smaller one, does that reduce, I mean, does that increase the possibility for any expansion or development in the future? Possibly, but it's not much.
Immaterial, almost, when I looked at the differences, right?
Fewer water you might be concerned about.
Yeah.
But I think, again, people are going to come back to the commission. Some of those uses and activities have been there for decades, so they're going to be updating to our current regulations and the standards and everything else. So it could be a better outcome overall, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
But our goal was, approach was not to make people non-conforming, to try to create a situation that would allow people to thrive in these districts. I think on page 31, there was a standard here that had been a parking standard per bedroom, and most parking standards are based on the unit. You can have a couple with two cars, so it's not a per bedroom. It's, so we tried to go to the per-unit standard, which is tied to in the back, and added a requirement here for pedestrian sidewalks along the Boston Post Road. Over to page 34. So again, we've merged here the DB1 and the DB2 zones into, just a DB, design business. We've created the language here on page 35, 763, which may include exterior storage or activity. So it's not a requirement here, whereas it is in the other district. We've added assisted living, memory care, any structure exceeding 8,000 square feet of gross floor area requires a special permit. So you might have a situation, somebody requires a special permit for the use, and also a special permit due to the size of the building. And again, the question is, is it compatible with this location? And the commission gets to review that.
So a good example would be on the Corner Brookside and Post Road, the...
The DB1 and DB2 zones are generally east of Sedgwick. So the area John's talking about is going along the Boston Post Road from Sedgwick to Brookside, and going further down eastward towards that. So there's a lot of old Victorian homes, small, we see a lot of small offices there. The commission recently has looked at a couple for, the one that was helping.
Post Road, somewhere.
Post Road, Salt Caves are both in the DB2 zone. So really, the regs here are written to encourage these small buildings to remain, discourage conglomeration, joining of them. Certainly, the old Metaplex Building is a big building, but really, to preserve the historic nature, the regs really encourage those small buildings to stay, and we want to allow more types of uses, which might, might just work in those small buildings. But the distinction right now between DB1 and DB2 is quite minimal, so we figured it's best to combine them and just be clear on what's allowed in that zone.
Anywhere else DB, is that...
Really, the only places are along...
Post Road there?
Post Road. There would be DBR overlay.
Here's the, oh, yeah.
DBR.
There's two housing developments on Leroy that are DB, but they're also the DBR overlay, so they're the residential side.
Okay.
The primary area, I'm looking again at the back.
Yeah.
Oh, right, by the Board of Ed.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Thank you, that's a good one.
Okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Page 35, there's two things on here, I just wanted to, or three things, I guess, to call out for your attention. So again, we have a single structure exceeding 8,000 square feet. So 8,000 square feet is a number that we picked, I mean, the commission could, maybe want to circle that and talk about what that number should be, 8,000 square feet, so still a good-sized building. In the sidebar, retail food establishments are not allowed in the design business zone. So those are things like cheese shops.
Butchers.
Butchers, et cetera. So trying to move those to the other business districts.
Are any other retail, sir?
Oh, yeah. If you look over on the bottom of 34, on the top of 35, sorry, yep, commercial sales and service, so retail stores are permitted, but retail food is not.
I think what we want to do here is be clear, so go back to Glenn, on DB1 and DB2, commercial sales and service, whether we want to say, how we want to treat them. See, right now, DB2 generally requires external storage or activity, so fence company, things like that. DB1 allows commercial sales and service by special permit. So this is one of those instances where, Glenn, by combining the zones, has 203 things, and the commission's going to have to make the decision, do you want to allow retail uses in the DB zone, which traditionally have not been allowed in DB2? So if you think of the area near Grant's Auto Body, Trader Joe's is settlement of litigation. It used to be a grocery store. So again...
Does DB1 currently?
Trader Joe's DB2. So again, the question of where do you want to allow retail uses is very sensitive, because once you allow them to spread up and down the post road...
Or at the Board of Ed, or Hail.
Right, you would think of it kind of strip-type development of...
Retail.
So it's, that's what we're going to have to look at when you combine these two zones, which don't allow the same thing. So that was one...
Which does have some retail already, but again, we've been...
We need to document what's in now DB1 and DB2 to get a flavor for...
That'd be great. And then we, let's come to a commonsensical kind of conclusion of what fits, based on what's working existing.
The other thing I wanted to point out, page 35 down at the bottom, 765A, this allows a drive-up for financial service use or other commercial sales or service, but does not allow a drive-through for a restaurant. So it's a fundamental difference.
Okay. And kind of the same thing on page 36, very minor tweaks so that you're allowing, or consolidating the...
Correct.
The bulk area, area and bulk requirements. Okay.
I think kicks us over to page 41. This is the Design Commercial District, there's really sort of two situations or two locations in town, one of which is Goodwives Shopping Center, and the second one is the corner of Leroy and West, so it's really not...
Wait, so that's the parking lot? Okay.
Yes.
Otherwise known as Coons. Okay.
So the primary activity that's going on here is at Goodwives. We've added in personal service businesses by zoning permit, we called, we talked about that at a prior meeting.
Yeah.
We've introduced retail food establishments, our new definitions, if you will, food-related establishments, retail food, full-service, quick-service. We've added in medical, dental offices, clinics, catering businesses, and the commission should evaluate and make sure they're comfortable with those. And again, over on page 42, accessory food service, tables and chairs, and then a drive-through window here is unrestricted, and people can apply for it by special permit for any...
Okay, so the big, the big additions, not big, but catering business, basically GHINJ that we should just think about and discuss next time.
Yep.
I don't have a strong feeling either which way.
So page 45 is the neighborhood business, there are really two locations in town, a five-mile road over by the Norwalk Line, and then the small neighborhood business up in Noroten, the corner of Noroten Avenue and Post Road.
There's one in Noroten and Maple. Very, very small, if you think of that little white two-story building.
Where the florist is now.
Yeah, and a hair salon, maybe, yeah.
Hair salon, that the commission researched. Very, very small. So it's a zone where those small commercial districts are very close to neighbors. So the question is, almost there, there are no permitted uses, everything needs a special permit, everything requires a public hearing, and the question is, do you wish to allow restaurants and food uses in this zone? It's a tough call, because if you think of the Five Mile River Road area, you have Jennifer's Kitchen, which used to be Five Mile Kitchen, or Lobster Craft, been a restaurant there for a long time. If you look at the neighborhood business zone on where Roost is, it has Mama Carmella's deli, has Papa Joe's Restaurant, which has expanded recently through the ZBA, and so it has basically three food uses there. So that's a question for the commission, how far do you want to go in allowing food uses in this zone, which...
Already exists.
Which exists, but traditionally hasn't allowed it.
So, and it would be a special permit, and they'd have to meet parking requirements going forward, so, you know, Papa John's, I mean, Papa Joe's was grandfathered from years and years ago, they have, you know...
They've expanded.
They've expanded through approvals, but, yeah, but they'd need to meet parking requirements. So another one to start and discuss next time, but...
And I think on 783, you put the two bullets in here, too, that talk about the fact the commission can evaluate the use for compatibility with the character of surrounding residential neighborhood.
Okay.
Situations where you could draw a line, if you will.
Got it.
I think that takes us through all, oh, then the designed office district. This is, again, a situation, there's three different office districts today. We proposed to merge these into one office district and combine the uses. Like to point out that office, medical, or dental is included in 792B, and hotel motel or inn, if we're going to talk about that, is down in 793F.
So that's an addition?
Yes.
Okay. But that's something to think about, some of these office parks that are, you know, have large footprints, large properties, you know, would it make sense? These designed office zones are scat, I don't want to say scattered throughout town, but if you think of the Post Road corridor, right, Jeremy, maybe give a couple examples.
Thorpe Circle is an office park right next to the library, which has a number of buildings, which Stanford Hospital most recently moved into, one of the buildings closest to Boston Post Road. The other building would be Parklands. As you know, Parkland Building 1 turned into an assisted living, memory care. Building 2, number three is in the back, still an office building. Darien Crossing, if you will, which is 32330 Post Road, building next to Duchess, and across the street from Fuji and Trader Joe's, they are keeping with the office, and so they will be filled with office, they're upgrading. And then there is Tonic Road. And then there is Tonic Road, if you will, as you go.
Yeah. Towards, towards Rowan.
The other side, and those haven't seen change in a long time. So those are the basic office zones, DOR1, DOR5, office business, and the question for the Commission is adding certain uses, like medical, dental clinics, and whether to add hotel, motel, or inns. And to be, again, one thing Glenn has talked about is clarifying not only business and professional office, but specifically calling out medical or dental office.
And again, when we think about these, like, read the definition, the background and purposes, because there's certain sensitivities that, you know, the regs want you to, the Commission to focus on when determining this, you know, I think we added childcare centers just recently within a year, you know, so again, you know, having clinics in these, does that make sense? So it's thought-provoking.
And then you have on the table in front of you an email from Craig Flaherty, who's here in the audience tonight, who makes other suggestions relative to this new Design Office Zone in terms of possible things for the Commission to consider, including as these zones change over time.
Yeah, so I like, I like both when you did, well, childcare kind of fits with the kids' recommendation of private or public school. Well, I guess public schools, we already have one there, and that would be what we just approved at Thorndale Circle, Fitch, yeah. So that makes sense, and then daycare center, one of these new trends that we're seeing that probably 20 years ago definitely didn't exist, so, yeah, if you could throw those in, that would be...
I'm surprised that the Design Office Zone is a new, the medical, dental clinics is new, because they do, don't we have that right behind Nielsen's, we have that, Stanford Health? Is that considered that?
Well, it's interesting, what we've had to do, and this is the nature of zoning, when it doesn't quite keep up with the times, you get the use that comes in, and I think at that, if I may be wrong on this, I think at the time, the Commission might have considered that a business and professional office.
Yes.
Oh, right.
And so now we're better clarifying, and that a lot of times people will, if they're not local, they'll read the regs from afar, they're, I specifically don't allow, so this way, we're making it as clear as possible.
Yeah.
And adding a new definition, which would be helpful to people that are considering that type of use, and also distinguishing between medical office and medical clinic.
And it's interesting, it's, go ahead.
I was going to say, so the only thing that, in my mind, that's, that seems fine, the clinics, the only thing in my mind, again, is the hotel motel. So SB zone and DO zones, is there another zone that you're putting hotel motels in, Glenn?
I think, I think we've...
We tested each...
The question is, in terms of the existing zones, all the top...
Does that exist in this one as well, I guess?
This one doesn't exist, this is new.
I do not believe the hotel motel inn is allowed in any of the office districts of the present time.
But is it, so you added it because you thought that it's kind of more standard?
I think the issue ends up being with the challenges that the office market can have today. The question is, how are we going to provide for a range of uses for these facilities, which is going to continue to be commercially relevant?
Right, because assisted living facility, memory care didn't exist until Parklands? Is that true, or was it changed slightly before that?
We, when, in that zone, that is the first one, you may recall when Metaplex converted to Maplewood, and then Maplewood became, and then we have the Ledge Road Assisted Living Facility, whose name escapes me, Adriania.
Adriania, sorry, yeah.
That's the service business zone.
Yeah.
So you're right, Parklands, Celix Woods, if you will, is the first assisted memory care in DOR1, DOR5, or office business.
In recent memory. I mean, there used to be a nursing home on Oakings Highway.
Exactly. Let's call it recent, past 30 years, yes. But you're right, the language has changed, no one uses the terminology, Metaplex was nursing home, it was proved as nursing home.
And so, and childcare centers, just to give you a little background, like childcare centers were probably added right before you started, I think.
Right.
And again, we're, because these, let's call it suburban office parks are having issues in filling...
Struggling to find tenants.
Typical office tenants, I think it's been the Commission's intention to broaden the possible uses that would not totally change the character, so we can talk about whether or not hotel, motel, or inn, you know, I think of up at Parklands, like, if that happens, somebody came to us as a hotel, would, assisted living's very different, but, you know, it's a big structure, and we'd have to think very carefully how to put it in.
And same similarly, childcare by special permit, when you talk about working in a business, the last thing you want to be is distracted with the noise of children or things, activities going on around you, so it's, that's where the Commission during its special permit can make sure the outdoor play area is not where everyone's taking off at the end of the day, or, so it's, certain circumstances, I know, the other thing that Craig talks about in his memo is private schools. There was a proposal many years ago for a private middle school or high school, I believe, in an office zone, never got off the ground, but that might be something the Commission allows in this zone by special permit.
Right, and now we have Fitch actually in one of these zones, so, which we allow by special permit, I guess. All right, good, that's, thanks, Craig, also, for adding this stuff.
I think on page fifty-one, this is where, again, where all the area dimensional standards were kind of smushed together.
Mm-hmm.
So there were some fundamental differences between the three office zones, so that's the Commission's step, take a quick look for this to make sure everything is okay.
But again, your intention is not to throw things out of compliance?
No, I think to create opportunities for these buildings to be occupied, maybe even some additions put on, but to keep them attractive and relevant. They're excellent locations on the highway, there's the drains, I mean, there's all sorts of things that make them relevant, is the market has changed fundamentally from what it was back in the 60s and 70s when some of these were built. So the question is not to allow them to weather, but to allow them to rejuvenate. I think there's some allowances here for parking to be deferred in terms of its installation on page fifty-three, item C. So if you're not going to need the spaces, you don't have to put them in. If you show us where they would be, if you have to put them in, but you don't have to pay them today. Item E is that since the minimum lot size is changing, some of the parcels could be subdivided, and the issue is if they're going to be subdivided, you have to provide us with a master parking, your crosses and everything else, so that everybody is assured of having shared access parking, et cetera, to make sure that they work in the future. You may want to finance them differently, but you still need to make sure they work in a lean-use perspective. I think, in my book, it brings us over to page fifty-five. So these are individual line items in the parking table, where we've suggested some possible changes here in terms of parking standards for different uses. We've gone to the terminology in terms of restaurants, quick service, full service. We did eliminate dinner theater, because, again, that no longer exists in that same way, and so some of the parking standards are being increased or decreased based on what we feel the current information indicates are the parking needs for uses such as these.
And these are industry standards, basically.
They are from ITEN, from others.
Yeah.
I'm just a little concerned that the, the outdoor dining, you want a space for every two seats outside, and it looks like before it was 17 seats or over would have required one space for each two seats thereafter, so this is, this is a big change. Like, if you were allowing people to have 17 seats outside before, they needed even one parking space, and now you're saying they need a parking space for every two chairs?
I think the challenge can be, the outdoor dining can be very popular, so the issue ends up being, what ends up happening if 17 seats, or, you know, that's nine spaces that aren't required? The Commission's comfortable continuing that allowance?
Or maybe there's a...
Somewhere happy medium.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's exactly what we're trying to find here, is a happy medium, that allows, people love outdoor dining, you know, and so we want to allow that to happen, but in the meantime, we don't want cars parking on the street, spilling over, et cetera, so we're trying to find that medium.
What's the indoor standard?
One space per, 10 per thousand, one space for each hundred square feet of gross room, so it's up above...
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, yeah, I think one space for every two, nice catch, I think that might be a little too restricted. Maybe one space for every four seats or something, because again...
As I said earlier, that, like in Tic Tac, yeah.
You're taking people from inside, which you're already requiring parking.
Exactly.
So, so, yeah, just noodle over that one, but I think maybe go to one per four or something like that. And think about the unintended consequences of doing that.
Or maybe, maybe we can give eight without an extra parking space, and then above eight, one per four, or something, just because, you know, it's summer and you want to sit outside instead of inside, as opposed to more people in general.
Parking standards right now for a full-service restaurant and a quick-service restaurant are based on square footage, whereas the outdoor one is for seats.
Right.
And the challenge ends up being inside, there's a lot of reconfigurations that happen, but outside is usually only got to be one configuration.
Yeah, exactly.
I think at this point, unless there's any else, Jeremy jumps out here over to page fifty-eight. So this is a clarification, really, in terms of municipal use district, there was some conflicting language or confusing language in the zone as to the difference between a floating zone and overlay zone. We just clarified it here, so the municipal use is an overlay zone, essentially all municipal facilities in town are being proposed to be rezoned to the municipal use overlay, and provide some flexibility for the town in terms of side yard setbacks and other things that would allow municipal facilities to continue to operate effectively on their sites. They're not likely to become non-conforming for other reasons, and gives the Commission some flexibility with regard to those sites. I think the most recent change was Highland Farm.
Hey, Jeremy, on 422A, just put a note that facilities controlled by the Darien Board of Education versus of the Darien Board of Education.
Right, because the Board of Ed in town does not own any buildings.
Correct.
The town owns them, and they are managed by, I think the word we use is...
Care custody and control is typically...
Care custody and control. So we'll change that wording in 422A to reflect that.
Thanks.
Good catch.
Yeah, and it wasn't, that wasn't yours, that was already in the regs, so...
Nobody.
Yeah.
And I think at that point, I think that brings us to the zoning maps, I think you were early indicated as a three map set here.
Sorry, before you go, sixty-three?
Yep.
Can we just refine some of the language? Instead of in the ball, town schools, just use public schools, because I think that's what we're going, like, we're not, we're looking at private schools, right? Okay? And then take out Old Library and just call it the Board of, it's actually the, what is it titled, the Administrative Board of Ed Administrative?
Administrative.
Yeah, and you can use thirty-five Leroy Avenue, and it's...
Thank you.
And I think the rest are...
Both of them could take out...
Public, so good towns schools called public schools. And then, remind me why we're putting in Old Town Hall Homes and not Allen O'Neill? If there's a reason to do that? And Clock Hill, I guess, right?
Isn't that in there?
What I believe, and I'll have to research this, I have to file on my desk, Old Town Hall Homes, the property is actually owned by the Darien Housing Authority, which is a state agency.
Right.
It's not town hall property, so that's a little different, and the Heights of Darien similarly is not town hall property.
Right.
So the question is, do we want to include them in the municipal use zone? Neither is likely to be coming to the Commission within the next 15 to 20 years, presumably, because Heights of Darien have just finished, Old Town Hall's about to start, and we're hoping that the projects, once constructed, last for a little while.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we take Old Town Hall Homes out, because it's not a municipal property, unless there's a good reason to have it in.
Unless it was previously done as part of their recent approval.
Right, yeah, so just, okay.
I'll have to check that.
And if that's the case, maybe we want to throw in the Heights, I call it, I'm sorry, I called it Allen O'Neill, but...
Wait, but I'm looking at the possible, and I think it is in there, isn't it? Isn't that it? That's municipal, and that's municipal, for his new zone map.
So, yeah, go to the map, is, is Heights in there? Looks like it is, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, if I'm not...
Yeah, me too.
Oh, okay.
So we should take a look at both of those.
We're going to have to zoom in on the zoning map.
Yeah, please.
We need to do the old files.
So checking on the two houses.
Yeah, so either both in or both out, unless there's a really distinct reason, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, because you have the firehouse across the street also, okay.
Yeah.
I think you might be missing Town Hall in this map, too, unless I'm not reading...
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
And then the Hoyt Street at Camp Avenue? Oh, you just put that in there because it's one of the...
Didn't fit on the map.
I didn't fit on, it's one of the many, that's not a municipal use, oh, but it should be service business up there, right? It should be shaded?
It is on this one, it is. It says B on the, on the fifty-one, so you're looking at this as just municipal?
Oh, wow. No, then, okay, I guess that's a question...
Turn to the next one.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
That one, go over there.
I think, I think one thing we're going to have to figure out is the best way to represent...
The changes.
If this thing's proposed, the changes...
Sorry.
And maybe we do just a separate map with just what we proposed to change to MU.
Yes.
What's existing MU now, again, what we want to do is find the best way to represent this to the public.
Okay, I got it, so this was changes, so is nothing changed in SB up on 106 at Hoyt Street and Camp Avenue?
Right.
But you, okay, these are all the change, so these are the changes that you're, you have different zones, so Narroton Heights is not an overlay zone, or whatever we called it, you're, okay.
If you look at the map, it's called Business Zoning Map Changes.
Yes.
There are three, two or three small parcels which are now zoned, that are being changed to R1 half.
Yeah.
So for example, the small house at the corner of...
Yeah, I see it.
Cross Street and Old King's Highway, which is now partially zoned, but it's such a small property, that it makes more sense to have it zoned residential.
All right, here's my suggestion, why don't you do MU as a separate map away from the business? So add a map, does that make sense?
Sure.
And then you'll have business separate, you have a municipal use kind of changes, you have business zoning map changes, and then you go to, maybe start with the existing business zoning map before the, like, reorder them also.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, I mean, in terms of, we've been binding these together for discussion a long time, but, sorry, thank you. We've been combining these together because they're all at the same time, but I think the issue here could simply be two packages for the Commission. One is the municipal use, which could be ready to go almost at any time, if the Commission's ready.
Yeah.
And the second one, the business ones, and those could take longer, so we can just go and take care of that.
Oh, that's smart, to do, yeah, almost two separate public hearings?
You can do them...
Yes, no? I heard a groan next to you.
We'll figure out the best way to present it to the Commission.
Okay, thank you.
That gets us through the booklet, if you will, in terms of the maps and other changes, I think...
Thank you, this was amazing.
Yeah, really.
I loved the cleaning up of all these.
So I think I'll, I mean, coordinate with Jeremy and Fred, and help with the next steps for the Commission's discussion dates, et cetera, if we move ahead on this.
So the next, the next steps are going to be...
Probably, my guess would be a revised booklet, and a return to the Commission with probably some basic questions of, here's how we've written it up, which reflects these policies, hotels, motels allowed in these zones.
Okay.
Restaurants with these, new restaurants. And that way, we'll lay it all out for the Commission, I'm guessing that'll be sometime in February, we'll have another meeting like this, where you can spend an hour or so hashing through those, maybe all six members will be here, and then we can finalize it, and then go to a public hearing in March or April.
Perfect. And everything's going to go up on the web, when, when do you want to start to present?
Probably the next version, once we get through this, which will then start getting public feedback, so really, we'll be returning to you with this probably in three, four weeks.
Okay, and my only point, the idea of splitting the municipal use from business use, is there's like different interests with municipal use, right? Because we're talking about schools that are scattered throughout residential areas, so in a way, it might make sense, if possible, to divide the two, or at least put them back to back, so we don't, you know, get caught up on, well, should, I'm just throwing this out there, Highland Farm be a municipal use zone?
Right.
And have... And have fifteen people, not that it will happen, but people step up and talk about that and then we get deflected from the business discussion.
I agree that that issue is so distinct from all these other changes that that can stand on its own. And that might be a separate hearing, separate night, separate time, so as not to take all the time away from these bigger issues on restaurants, office parks and things like that, that we can spend another night, another evening on just that one issue.
And we can target the business community audience versus the residential community audience too, okay.
Have anything else? Just send Fred or I an email, we'll work with Glenn and try to pull this together.
Yeah, no, it's great. Like if you're flipping through and you find something, just shoot an email with a page number and they'll integrate it. It's good train reading.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, you want to read the next one?
Yeah, number two on the agenda discussion with Jeff and Duro of Williams Seymour Associates regarding.
Part two of getting deep in the weeds of zoning regulations and concepts and strategies. Thank you for, I mean, this is, this is probably like your perfect meeting when we get deep in the regs and, you know, all joking aside, thanks for coming. This is, we really appreciate your time.
Definitely does tie in. Basically, you know, I'll start out with, you know, what's involved in producing a survey and how do we get started on it? I kind of say there's three Rs in surveying. The first R would be research, researching land records, researching building department records, sometimes even researching the court records. There's a lot of different ways that we look for information before we even get started on our surveys. The second R is recovery, recovering things that are called out in the deeds, be it monumentation, be it, you know, fence corners, be it just an interpretation as to one property to another. Sometimes the only description of a property is by an owner. Well, does that owner have a description in their deed that will help you establish the property lines? So there's, there's quite a bit that goes on in the field to apply what you find in the deeds to those field conditions. And then the third R that I come up with is the reconciliation of what you find in the field with the record maps and with the deeds and trying to put that all together. And it's definitely a challenging puzzle. Many times you'll have conflicting deeds, you'll have different calls that just don't seem to work. Sometimes you'll go out and you'll do a subdivision, you'll go out and survey a lot of lots in a subdivision, you'll find out, wait a minute. By the time you get to the end of the subdivision, this last lot doesn't have the area that it was supposed to have, doesn't have the frontage. Well, how do you approach that? Sometimes you'll prorate it throughout all the lots. There's all kinds of different methodologies that we use in that. So that, you know, that gets you into what we do and the start of the process. We've had a number of topics that I was going to go through. One of the things that kind of ties into that is the surveyor's right of entry, you know? Are we allowed to trespass? Are we allowed to go on other people's properties? Yes, we are in doing our duties. There is a state statute under chapter nine twenty-five, section fifty-two dash five fifty-seven oh. It was actually nineteen ninety-two and that was pretty much Bill Seymour, the founder of our company, really worked on that with the Connecticut Association of Land Surveyors and got that legislation passed. As long as you don't do any damage, physical damage to the properties, you have the right to go on it. Now, obviously, we're not going to just go tracing onto somebody's property without notifying them. We'll always try to knock on the doors and try to get that permission. And if they say no, well, you know, we'll usually try to explain to them why we're doing it and why it would even potentially benefit them to have us on their property. And sometimes it's just good PR for us, you know, to talk to the neighbors. We have had instances where we've had to have police come and escort us onto a piece of property to do the survey. That's very rare. Next item that we'll discuss is the monumentation. What are stakes, pins, lath, iron pipes, concrete monuments, marble monuments, granite monuments? You know, when are different monumentation elements used?
Are they still used? Like the, when I think of the concrete, I guess, inserts with the cross on them?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes. It is actually required in certain towns for the subdivision. You have to monument the corners of the property and they have very specific callouts. I know up in Newtown, they have a specific depth you have to have it, you have to have it a specific size and has to have the reinforcing rod in it. So, so, yeah, there are specific calls on that.
Do we have any regulations that we know of in Darien?
No.
Because we have a lot of subdivisions coming up.
Yeah.
And I know from personal experience, I had to survey my home, I'm a couple of years in, and we did find the stakes at almost all corners and in the front and things like that and it came in really handy.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that you have to be careful of when you see a surveyor's stake in the field, what you'll often see is a taller, what we call a finder lath. And then that usually on it has a description of the actual point, which is usually either an iron pin driven into the ground, could be a stake in the ground, could be a drill hole, could be a nail in the pavement, anything.
Oh, yeah, no, it was the metal stake, because right, the wood ends up getting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's designed to rot away over time.
Yeah.
What I often recommend to people, if an iron pin is put on a property corner and you might think it might be a little hard to find later on, throw a few stones around it, throw, just, you know, put three or four stones around it, you're gonna have a much easier time of finding that in the future. If it's buried under leaves or something, really helps, you know, and it helps us too. We like to be able to find corners many years later. So that's, that's what you see and, you know, some of, some of the points are obviously meant to be temporary. They're just to give you, we're staking a line, we know that somebody's gonna be putting a fence up, we're just gonna be putting some wooden stakes along that line. If we know that, you know, they're looking at, really knowing where their corners are, we're gonna put something more permanent. Could be an iron pipe, could be an iron pin. We have put monuments on many properties where they really wanted something permanent. So we will set the monuments and they could be anywhere, you know, usually about thirty-six inches long, you know, buried with just a small amount showing above the surface. They often get knocked around by landscapers and mowers and things like that, so we try to keep them close to the surface. It may be hard to find, but it will protect it in the long run. There are some monuments that we use that are designed so that if the top of it breaks off, there's still something in the ground. We use our metal detectors to find those. A lot of the newer monumentation that we use has magnets in it, so it does make it a lot easier to find. The things can be three foot underground and I can still find it, you know, so that, that helps us. Then we get into some of the complicated things that are in a state of flux. When we get to mean high water, mean low water, the coastal jurisdiction lines, mean low water. How do these things affect your property and why do we even need to call them out? Connecticut is a mean high water state. Some states like Massachusetts is a mean low water state. You own your property down to mean low water. In Connecticut, it's mean high water. Everything beyond mean high water is owned by the sovereign, it's owned by the state. You don't own it. You may have rights to it, but it doesn't mean you own it. You'll see deeds that often describe that as being part of the property. Well, you don't own it. You have rights and you may have exclusive rights to it to some extent, but you cannot keep somebody from taking a boat across your water out in front of your property. It's, it's owned by the state. So that is something that also works with the DEEP, when it comes to their jurisdiction. The DEEP basically regulates up to what we call the coastal jurisdiction line. That used to be what we call the high tide line. But when you look at the definition of the high tide line in state statutes, it's, it's really subjective. I mean, you could have one agent from DEEP come out and look at it and say, oh, it's here, you know? Year later, I've got somebody else come out, oh, no, it's over here and it was, this just didn't work. So through the Connecticut Associates and the Land Surveyors, we did title studies up and down the coast, up and down the tidal rivers in Connecticut, came up with a real solid data model that said, these are a predictable tide level anywhere in the state. And it varies, you know, you've got tide swings from way up in the northeast corner of the state that are very different from here. You know, you've only got a tide swing up there of like two and a half feet, whereas here we've got seven point three feet in this area. So that, that changes, so those elevations, it's not the same elevation throughout the state. It's a constantly changing elevation, but that information is all available on the DEEP website. And so we use that to establish the rights of the property owner and the jurisdictional line for the DEEP. As part of that whole waterfront, since we have so much shoreline here and a big part of what we do is waterfront survey. Part of that is surveying underwater, you know? We map the bottom. We map what's down there for either dredging projects or to know how much water you have to put your boat out there and all. That's hydrographic surveying. We go out in a boat, we have a sounder unit that's tied to our GPS. The boat goes around, records the bottom depths, we bring that back and we can create a three-dimensional model of the, of the bottom.
You do that high tide or low tide?
You can do it anytime, doesn't really matter, but, you know, you.
You just add the seven feet.
You look at different, different jobs. I mean, sometimes we're gonna look at a job and say, it's much easier to just go out and walk it at low tide and get a lot of that, it's much faster, easier to do than getting the boat. But sometimes you want to do it with the boat because you just, you know, it's too muddy and, you know, we have actually a special boot, it's called a mutter. It's, it's a boot that when you step down, it spreads out and you can walk across the mud, they're amazing. They were, they save us many times. Then when we look at, you know, the, all of these regulatory lines and all that, they're all based on datums. When we speak about the elevation of something, it's, it's got to be based on something. You've got to have a starting point. You've got to say, you know, that if you've got an elevation, well, what's your zero? Over the years, in nineteen twenty-nine, it was, you know, National Geographic vertical datum of nineteen twenty-nine. That was revised in nineteen eighty-eight. Nineteen eighty-eight was basically when we started using the GPS more for establishing the elevations. And then there was a place up in Canada near Quebec called Ramuski Point and they called it Father Point. That was the starting point of all of our vertical datum, so they started there and they spread that out. Now with the advent of more accurate GPS, we found that's not that accurate anymore. It can be as much as two or three feet horizontal distance on our, on our horizontal datum and we found a tilt in the model from one coast to the other, well over a foot, so, and possibly up to three feet. So the GPS has really changed what we're looking at and how we're basically establishing that zero. In the old days, zero was, you know, mean sea level. Well, mean sea level isn't what it used to be. It's changing and that gets into what we're looking at in the future. We're going to a new datum in twenty twenty-two. It's going to change. You're not using NAVD eighty-eight, you're not using NAD eighty-three, there's one datum. And we're gonna be basing it on different plates, basically. The North Atlantic, Pacific, Mariana and the Caribbean. So there's going to be four different areas that are going to be specific in their, in their datums. And the North American is called the North American Terrestrial Reference Frame. And the reason it's done like that is because we move. All of our surveying now, you look at X, Y, Z, now you've got V. Where is it moving, you know? If you're using GPS to establish a point and you take those same coordinates that you did twenty years ago and you put them on the ground today, it's not in the same position on the air surface.
Wow.
You have to know where it's moving, you know?
Which way it's going, yeah.
You have to be able to calculate where it's going to go.
So hold on, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it's, it's going to change greatly. And my fear, of course, is we're becoming so reliant on all this GPS and I'm an old timer. What happens if we have a big solar flare and lose all of our GPS satellites? Who's gonna remember how to do it the old-fashioned way? Us gray hairs can still do it, but a lot of these new kids, they wouldn't know which button to push.
Talk about just quickly wetlands, if you wouldn't mind, and, you know, how you guys mark where the delineation of a wetland is and how that's determined?
Okay, well, the wetland is defined by the flagging done by the soil scientists. They're doing it based on the soil types. They're going out, they're digging test holes, basically. They've got like augers and things that they'll use and it really is based on what they see in the soil colors, you know?
More clay means wetland, I mean.
More clay, different, different organic matter and stuff like that in it. You know, they've got a whole chart that tells them, you know, what type of a wetland is, what type of soils it is. So our responsibility, we don't establish where the wetlands are, we go out and we map the flags that they do. So that, obviously, it's not a precise science. You get two soil scientists out there that can sometimes vary five, ten feet. It's really subjective in their, in their area. All we can do is map what they've given us. So when we do that, we're trying to, as accurately as possible, map what they've put on the ground.
And then two other things that pop out of here, just in the interest of time. The underground items, you're using what, metal detectors or existing plans or?
Everything. We use existing plans. We'll sometimes have markout companies go, they, they sometimes will actually run a remote vehicle under, under the ground, they'll trace it. We just did one for the Maritime Center. They had pipes that were twenty-four feet, twenty-five feet underground that we had to have the accuracy, get, get the location of that. So we, we try, most times when we're out doing the drainage structures, you've got a catch basin here, you've got a catch basin there. There's a pipe between the two of them, we can show that pipe, we know where it's going to be.
And then, and then something that's come up, at least in my five and a half years, is when two surveyors disagree or the public kind of questions, you know?
That's twenty paces. It's, we try to work that out with the surveyors. I mean, the two surveyors, we'll get together and we'll, you know, we'll share data, you know, we'll, we'll say, okay, well, you know, maybe they've got something that we couldn't find, maybe they have some old records or something, you know? I've, I've modified my surveys many times based on, you know? I get, I get out there and I go, man, this stuff isn't working. I'll try to find some of the original surveyors, I'll call them up, I'll say, do you have any more information here, is there anything you can help me with? We, we don't have too many instances of real property line disputes. Very much it's more a perception of, you know, well, a real estate agent told me it's here, you know? But you staked it over here, you're wrong. Well, okay, I'm wrong, but that's why I have my license, but, you know, not always wrong, so.
Yeah, because you're stamping everything and you're putting your professional.
Yes, putting my seal on it and all. So, you know?
And that means if, I mean, we've had questions, what does that seal mean? I mean, that, your professional certification, you're putting your reputation on the line?
Means I can insure and sure. You know, to ensure and, and, you know? We are professionals. We're, we're taking the utmost care and doing our work. Can mistakes get made? Sure they can, but we try to limit that, you know, by doing as much research and, you know, gathering as much data as we can. know, gathering as much data as we can. The more data you have, the stronger your cases. I don't know if you, I mean, I've got a few maps here, you know, obviously. Here's the West Avenue, Rowan Avenue, which is going to be coming up, the intersection. We're redoing all this. This is the existing conditions map showing, this is what they're going to be using to design all of that. Very often when we do this type of survey, we also do the photograph of overlays on it. This photograph is actually from 2016. These are the, this is from the full state of Connecticut. We have very accurate, high resolution photographs and we use those very much as a check on our surveys. Back to the tidal datums. This is the way it used to be done. This was done in 1988, for the Army Corps of Engineers. They did all kinds of tide studies up and down Long Island Sound.
So what does that line represent? The timing of the tides going out or?
This is a specific mile distance from a starting point here. And it's, every point along here is, corresponds to a chart which has the elevation. So here.
That's pretty cool.
This, these are the different tide levels, mean low water, mean tide level, mean high water, the different storm events. They've got a line, Hurricane of September 21st, 1938. They've got the 54 flood here. They have the 50 year, 100 year, 10 year. But this is based on older data. This has changed. Now that we have much more accurate tide reporting stations, this really doesn't get used anymore. But this is what we used to use up until probably 15 years ago. That was the best. This is an interesting one because this is from January 13th to just before I got here. This is, this is showing the tide station up in Bridgeport. The blue is the predicted tide level, the red is the recorded tide level. If you look at these charts, we're seeing this more and more and more.
What's the timeframe? 113?
Yeah, 113 to 116, so today.
Oh, okay.
So just in this timeframe, you can see that all of these tide levels were higher and.
But is that weather or, like, could that be wind oriented?
It could be wind, but I'm finding that it's almost a constant. I did a study over six months and I found that almost 86% of the tides were somewhat above normal.
The blue is predicted.
The blue is the predicted tide.
Based on what? On historical?
Yeah, this is, this is what they call the epic. It's a 19 year tide study. They always base it on 19 years. They'll have, each time they do it, they'll have to take new readings.
I bet you it's based on like some lunar cycle.
Yeah, it is. 19 years is what the full lunar cycle will run for that. So that's, you know, that tells you.
It's supposed to be warming now.
Well, be careful, it's not all global warming. There's something we found out when we started using the GPS. We did a re-leveling in 1988 along the coast and we said, wait a minute, why are all of our benchmarks along the coast lower than the ones on the other side of the Appalachian? Oh, there's a reason for that. It's called subsidence. The North American Plate is going underneath the North Atlantic Plate. It makes it look like the tide's rising more than it is.
We're sinking.
It is rising, but we're sinking. We're definitely going down. And not only here, but you look at areas like that in Louisiana where they are talking feet, where they pulled out all this water and they're running into some very severe problems there. It's an interesting survey. That's Green Sledge Lighthouse. So that's, you know, that's now being restored. They're doing a lot of work on it. So we went out and had to do the survey for them. They actually have a lease area around the lighthouse. There are oyster beds.
It's privately owned now, correct? I think I saw that. It's privately owned.
Privately owned now, yes.
And you can purchase, this is totally not related, but you can actually donate to its renovation and then get to sleep in it.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to be turned into a bed and breakfast.
That's very cool.
If you give like $100,000 or something, you actually can own a piece of it. The guy bought it for like nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, just examples of the different types of surveys on. People might know that one, the Token E Club, and that kind of shows, doing the surveys out into the water and getting the depths. One of the reasons they were doing this one was to monitor the shifting of the sand and all. They've had some issues. We've done a number of those. Bailey Beach, I've been doing surveys for years there. And every quarter, we go out and do a new survey, retrace the same lines and we'd be able to trace where the sand is moving to, so that, you know.
Where's it going there?
It's just.
Down by Weaver?
Yeah, it's moving downstream, basically, you know, so.
Thank you.
So.
This has been very helpful.
Very interesting.
You know, thanks for stepping forward and giving us a little insight and.
Yeah, and, you know.
It means behind the madness.
You have questions too. I mean, you know, that's, I have no problem answering questions.
Awesome.
Great, thanks.
How many years have you been doing it?
Started in 1977.
Just a young start.
Licensed since, I kind of held off on getting my license for a few years, but I was licensed in 1999. And that was only because Bill Seymour passed away and I ended up inheriting the company whether I wanted it or not.
Very good. Thanks again. Good seeing you.
Celebration of possible decisions regarding the following. Three flood damage prevention, application number 387, landfilling and regading, application number 445, Brian and Darian Chase, 10 Holly Lane, proposal to raise the existing dwelling and the construction residents in generally the same location, regrading the yard to accommodate new residents and perform related site development activities within regulated area. Hearing closed, 1/8/2019.
Jeremy.
Here, Fred and I.
Sorry.
Yep. Fred and I worked on it, the draft resolution in your pack, you may recall, the public hearing was last week. Fairly straightforward public hearing, 10 Holly Lane, property's in the flood zone. So one of the conditions of approval is to require an elevation certificate. So the condition had proper evidence that the house was built per the flood regulations, asking for a final certification on the drainage and regading as well.
So this is that additional level that you guys just discussed with FEMA, right?
Correct. Details on flood events and things like that. EPC did approve this project. And one of the things in the resolution is that the driveway is now on the south side of the property, will be moved to the north side of the property. And if you look at the engineering plans, accommodations have been made to make sure that that driveway won't impact the neighbors in the north.
And then the last issue that came up was the.
On the south side of the property, the neighbor to the south came to the public hearing, had concerns about the culvert and any obstructions, and that's also been accommodated in the draft resolution.
Perfect.
Good, great.
I didn't see any need for any changes to anybody else?
I did not.
Did you get a motion approved as was submitted or drafted?
I've moved to be approved as submitted.
All in favor? Awesome.
Great. Number four, coastal site plan review, number 336, flood damage prevention, application number 79A, landfilling and regading, application number 446, Jesse and Abigail Hoard, Greece Solonoid Drive, proposal to construct additions to an existing suite of single family residents, construct new pool, patios and new driveway and perform related site development activities within regulated areas. Hearing closed, 1/8/2019.
Right, the hearing on this was last Tuesday. You may recall that the applicants made before the commission and right up front said that they're withdrawing a portion of the application. So we put that right on page one, that part of the application has been withdrawn. That aspect is the gate and pillars. That's finding number two, knowing specifically that was withdrawn. And then they end up coming back to the commission in the future. Again, here, we talk about proposed work in the flood zone and that's reflected in the conditions of approval where elevation certificate and as-built maps will be required to make sure we comply with flood regulations and that certificates of occupancy won't be issued till those verifications are submitted to our department.
Again, the only issue was the gate, which wasn't part of the application. And I didn't see anything that needed any revision, so. Anybody else?
I had nothing.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve as drafted?
Motion to approve as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Awesome. Okay. Okay, Jeremy, update regarding proposed fee increase going before the RTM.
Sure. State statutes require that any change in land use application fees get approved by the legislative body, which in Darien is the representative town meeting or RTM. So the proposal in my January 11th memo talks a little bit about how Fred and I looked at the current fees. We reevaluated them based upon out-of-pocket costs, which increase over time, things like postage and mailings, legal notices, advertising. And so we have to make sure that the fees that the applicants pay accounts for that. So we've given you a history of the state portion, because there is a state fee which is tacked on per state statute. And that's increased, it last increased in 2009. And so we, the memo walks you through some of the changes. What we like to do is have the application fees best reflect the time and staff time and energy and the out-of-pocket costs. So that's why some are more than others with zoning map and text amendments. Staff afterwards has to incorporate those. We publish, post it to the web. So those are more work, certainly accounting for the out-of-pocket public hearing fees. If you go to page five, we talk a little bit about zoning permit fees. Those are the precursors to building permits. So if you were to get a building permit to add on to your house or build a shed or a deck or a pool, the zoning permit fee is based upon the value of the work.
Is this correct that the one for sign oning and facade change permit fee is going down from 110 to 65 percent?
No, what we've done is clarified it. I'm glad you brought that up. What we wanted to do was, there was a question as to if you were, say, Caffey Nero and you have two signs, you have the blade sign and you have the wall sign, did they have to pay the state fee twice? And that question kept coming up. So we said here, the new fee will make it clear. It's $65 per sign.
And then the one-time fee to the state.
It's more of a clarification.
Got it. I was gonna say, you rarely see things going down.
Yes. So that was a very small increase. And what we tried to do with zoning permit fees is keep the fee for small things pretty low, pretty manageable, whether it's finishing a basement or a shed, you know. We want people to go and get the permits and do the right thing. So by keeping the fee fairly low, which is $50, and then the state fee added on, it's, we think that's pretty reasonable.
I mean, I was going to say, is there, I mean, I'm not questioning your judgment, but in that case, the lower the better? Is there even a reason to raise that one? Because, I mean, that's the one where people cheat on them by far the most.
Right. And, you know, it's tough because some of them do require some work. And that's what we've tried to do is break it into three categories. The largest category, usually there's a drainage plan to review, there's surveys and engineering plans. So when we talk about 79,000 or less, sometimes it's making sure. What's interesting about working in Darien versus working anywhere, Darien's very built out. So people are always pushing the limit of 19.9% coverage or, ah, I can put the pool in because I'm taking the deck out. And so.
It's a little more complicated than just a building from the ground up, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
So what we tried to do is have the fees reflect the work, the review time, the out-of-pocket costs. With your okay, I'm going to go to the RTM with this in February.
Do we even have to approve it? No.
No, it's just a courtesy to you so you understand what's going on and I'll.
Go get them. Glad we don't have to decide this, be the bad guys. No, but thanks for the detail. And when do you go in front of the RTM?
The RTM, late February. I think it's the 25th of February, it's a Monday night.
Okay. And do you know what the revenues are, the department, from all these fees roughly?
I talked about that. I just had my meeting.
If you don't have it, don't. Do you remember?
I actually don't.
All right.
I want to say 120,000, but I might be off.
Okay. If you get back to the office, just shoot. I'm just interested.
It was in my brain.
Yeah, that's okay. Caught you off guard. Something in the, under 150.
Yeah, it's.
Over 100?
Right. We're not a profit center for the town. The tax collector is the profit center.
Got it, okay.
Bring in.
I'm sure you'll remind the RTM on that, that aspect too. Especially since Fred started. Anyway, all good. All right, so any, you want to give us a calendar update before we go to executive session?
Sure, we meet next Tuesday, which is the 22nd. Couple of public hearing items dropped off, so it won't be a lengthy meeting.
I mentioned I wasn't able to come, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry about that. Will you have a quorum?
Yeah, I think.
We should still have a quorum. Meeting after that is the 29th, that's a pretty full night. We'll have some public hearings the 29th. And then February 5th should be a couple of public hearings, general meeting, shouldn't be too lengthy.
Okay. All right, right now, we're going to go into executive session, TV.
We're off the record. So you need a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, I do? Okay.
And the reason would be to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, so can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Are we going to reach any further decisions this evening that the public should know about?
So TV 79 asked us if we're going to reach any further decisions that the public should know about? And the answer is the only decision the public should know about is we will adjourn immediately after executive session.
So we will terminate our coverage at this point.
Great. Thank you, sir.